Ready?
I don't have co-hosts. They haven't given me co-host ability.
That's okay. You need a minute?
TS, if you could hear me, I need co-host ability, please.
We'll get there in a second.
My apologies.
The problem, Chris. It happens.
It appears that I have it now.
Welcome, everyone. My name is Carolyn Sunderland. I'm the Deputy Director of Planning with the Department of Planning and Zoning. I will be acting as the Planning Commission Administrator for this evening. This meeting will be conducted as a hybrid meeting, allowing for both visual, virtual, and per-in-person participation. Serving as the moderator tonight is Christine Goldsmith, who is our Planning Commission Development Review Coordinator, who will be going over the rules of etiquette for the meeting. Christine?
Good evening. I'm Chris Goldsmith, and I will be moderating this evening. This meeting is being recorded on both video and audio for record-keeping purposes. For those attending virtually or on a phone, please keep yourself muted to ensure no interruptions to the evening. If you're asked to speak and you're attending on your phone, you can mute and unmute yourself by using the phone's designated mute button or by pressing star six. If you're on a computer, you can mute and unmute yourself by clicking on the microphone slash mute button on the toolbar in the bottom-left of your screen. You can also mute and unmute by using keyboard shortcuts. Windows, you can press Alt+A, or on a Mac, press Command+Shift+A. When questions and comments are requested of the public, those attending in person will be asked to speak firsthand, and those attending virtually will speak after. If you're attending via phone and would like to ask a question or make a comment, when asked, please use the raise hand function, which is star nine, and you will be called upon in turn to identify yourself for the record and speak. If you're attending virtually and would like to ask a question or make a comment, please go to the chat icon on your Zoom page and type your comment into that section. Finally, please say your name every time you speak for the benefit of those calling in who cannot see you. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. I will now turn the floor over to the chairman.
Thank you. I'm Steve Jones, Chairman of the Calvert County Planning Commission. Thank you for joining us. It's March 16th, 2022. This is a regular meeting.
Oh, no, March, April 28th.
I'm sorry. Okay, my, my, my.
My fault.
Yep, I got it. April 28th. I was just going with the script here. Sorry. I'll take roll call. Vice Chair Bueller.
Here.
Commissioner Freeland.
Here.
Commissioner Holler.
Here.
Commissioner Kernan.
Here.
Commissioner Tuohy.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
All present. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner, do I have an action on the proposed agenda?
Motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kernan, second by Commissioner Tuohy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
For the next item, we have item three, action on proposed agenda. We've done that. The following item is item four, action on proposed summary of actions. Item four A, March six, March 16th, 2022, regular meeting.
Commissioners, are there any changes on the summary of actions? I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the summary of actions.
Motion by Commissioner Kernan, second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tuohy. You all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next item is item five, recognition, recognition of persons attending the meeting. Tonight with us from the Department of Planning and Zoning, we have Mary Beth Cook, Director; Judy Mickle, Deputy Director; Jenny Plummer Welker, Long Range Planner; Christine Finnamore, Principal Planner. From the Department of Public Works, we have JR Cosgrove, Deputy Director, Capital Projects. Is the Director here tonight as well? Okay, and Keri Dahl, Director, Department of Public Works. Also in attendance with us tonight is John Mattingly, Providing Legal Counsel, and Becky Parkinson, serving as Recording Clerk. Up next is item six, applications for site plan review and action. We have one item, item six A, SPR 138176, Armory Square, Detailed Site Development Plan. Chris Finnamore, Principal Planner, will be presenting the case.
Thank you, Carolyn. Can y'all hear me? There is a slideshow that TS staff is going to bring up. As Carolyn said, my name is Christine Finnamore. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm a Principal Planner with the Department of Planning and Zoning in the Development Review Section. I'm presenting the site development plan for the project SPR 138176, entitled Armory Square. It's located on Parcels 477 and 718. If you can go to slide, the next slide. Tax map 24, in the Prince Frederick Town Center, Newtown Subarea. This project is following the old process by which the detailed site plan versus the conceptual site plan is what's being presented here. Next slide, please. Here, you'll see a map of Prince Frederick. There's the 2022 aerial photography. The site is highlighted in yellow. It's Parcels 477 and 715, for a total of 12.58 acres. It is the old Calvert Middle School. Oh, wait, sorry. It is the old Calvert Medical School site, but I wanted to point out Calvert High School. If you see that just above the label for Dares Beach Road. Calvert Pines is at the other end of Dares Beach Road, if everybody knows where that is. There is no label. The town center boundary is outlined in a goldish-yellow color, and it's also labeled as such. The site property has frontage along Maryland Route 24, which is labeled on the map, also known as Solomon's Island Road. It has frontage on Maryland 402, also known as Dares Beach Road, which is labeled on the map. Thank you. And it also has frontage along Armory Road, which is a county road. The other two are state. The property is zoned Town Center. It's in Prince Frederick, and it's in the Newtown District. Next slide, please. So I wanted to show the Prince Frederick Town Center in its entirety. These are the sub-areas. The Newtown Subarea District is in blue, and at the end of that arrow is our site at the corner roughly of Dares Beach Road and Maryland 24. Next slide, please. So this is a schematic exhibit of the proposed site development, showing the proposed development, which includes over 108,000 square foot of proposed retail space, including the following. Retail is Buildings 1, 2, and 3, which are along Maryland 24 at the bottom of the picture. One is 5,000 square feet, and the other two are each 8400 square feet. And it's basically the same building, it's just mirrored. There's also retail space in the form of a grocery store, 19,209 square feet, right there where the cursor is circling. Thank you. There is a future retail anchor, 23,400 square feet. Thank you, where the cursor is circling. So total retail is just over 64,000 square feet in space. There's a medical office building. Thank you, 39,400 square feet. And then an automobile filling station and convenience store with a car wash, also at the northern end of the site. And the area of that is 4,843 square feet. And it's the two different buildings on the northern end. There's a smaller one and then the larger one, where the cursor is circling. Thank you. So again, the property has frontage on Armory Road, Maryland 402, and Maryland 24. The setbacks associated with those roads. Maryland 24 and Route 402, it's 25 feet or 10 feet minimum from the property line. From Armory Road, it's 35 feet. That can be reduced to 25 feet from the edge of curb with Planning Commission approval. The side setback is 20 feet. That can be reduced to zero feet if emergency access and maintenance are addressed. Reduction from 20 feet to five feet is what's requested and proposed at the northern end of that site, adjacent to the Taco Bell property. Vehicular access is proposed from all three road frontages. A private access and utility easement proposed to be named as Carnival Way. Bisects the site in an east-west fashion from Armory Road to Maryland 24. A traffic impact study, also known as a TIS, was performed by Lenhart Traffic Consulting, Incorporated, and approved by State Highway Administration in November of 2021. The intersection at Carnival Way in Maryland 24 also had a traffic signal warrant analysis completed by Lenhart, and it was reviewed by State Highway Administration. Three access points for the site are proposed from Armory Road. Next slide, please. I'll quickly go over parking. Of course, the site is proposed as commercial and office space. There is parking required. One space per 250 gross square feet of retail, as well as, it's the same number for medical office space, and one space per 200, 250 gross square footage for convenience store, plus two spaces per Pump Island. So at the end of the day, the parking that's required is 462 spaces, if you treat everything individually. There is a parking, shared parking ratio, if you treat it as a whole, you can reduce the number basically to 385. You look at the uses as a whole, and they all coincide with each other. Versus treating it individually, the parking requirement is less. So total of 385 parking spaces are required, and 408 are currently being proposed. Landscaping is proposed throughout the project, and it doesn't show up on this page. I will say that the site plan set is, I believe, 98 sheets. We included eight or nine in this presentation. So landscaping plan is obviously one of those sheets. Proposed throughout the project, as well as along the existing property frontage, in order to meet the requirements for screening from adjacent properties, adjacent uses, parking lot landscaping, as well as planting within stormwater management areas. A landscape plan is currently under review and is incorporated into the detailed site development plan. There's also a hardscaping plan that was prepared, and it's in that same plan set, and it's currently under review. Same thing goes for photometrics. Lighting is required. Photometric plan has been submitted and is under review by the planning staff to ensure that all buildings, street lighting, along with parking areas, sidewalks, and loading/unloading have adequate lighting for public safety purposes in accordance with Article 6 of the Calvert County zoning ordinance. Stormwater management. The project must meet the current standards and requirements for stormwater management design, including the three-step approval process. A conceptual swim plan or stormwater management plan was previously approved by the Department of Public Works by a memo dated December 3rd, 2020, with certain outstanding comments and conditions to be addressed. A stormwater management plan, or Step 2, as we like to call it, is currently under review for the project and must be approved prior to final site plan approval. Cultural resources, and Commissioner Freeland, correct me if the dates are wrong. The former Calvert Middle School site was recorded in the Maryland Inventory of Historic Properties under MIHPCT-1255, and that's in the staff report. The proposed development is unlikely to impact significant historic and archaeological resources. That's coming from the Cultural Resources Review. They did recommend that the applicant partner with local historic preservation organizations to design and install interpretive signage related to the past use of the property as part of the site development. Environmental. A wetland report was prepared by Kevin McCarthy with Bay Environmental in March of 2020. The report states that, based on three parameter criteria, and this is normal review criteria for any delineation, based on the three parameter criteria set forth in the Army Corps of Engineers Wetland Delineation Manual and the Regional Supplement to the Corps of Engineers Delineation Manual, waters of the U.S., including non-title wetlands were identified on the property. The delineation report and plan acknowledged the area of non-title wetlands that occur on the subject site, as well as the stream and wetlands on the adjacent property, which affect the site due to location extent of stream and wetland buffers. A jurisdictional determination, also known as a JD, was issued for the property by the Army Corps of Engineers in November of 2020. The applicant sought necessary variances from the Calvert County Board of Appeals in January of 2022 for a reduction to the county 50-foot non-title wetland buffer, as well as the impacts within the 10-foot setback and the 25-foot buffer for required upgrades to Maryland 402, Dares Beach Road, as I like to call it. And there's a Board of Appeals case number in the, in the staff report for that. The applicant has also obtained approval from the Maryland Department of the Environment, also known as MDE, for proposed impacts to non-title wetlands and the state wetland buffer associated with the Dares Beach Road improvements. And that was issued in August of 2021. The site also has to meet forest conservation requirements of the Maryland Forest Conservation Act. So the net tract area for that is just over 11 acres with 1.76 acres of forest. They're currently proposing to retain 0.42 acres on-site and mitigate off-site with the use of six forested TDRs. And what that does is it permanently protects six acres of forest, off-site but within Calvert County. And of course, the project is required to have final forest conservation plan approval before final site plan approval. At this time, they have preliminary forest conservation plan approval. The slide on the screen now shows the, what we'll call the south portion of the site. If you advance to the next slide, it shows the northern portion of the site. The previous exhibit that was in color showed the whole site. And these are pages out of the site development plan. Adequate public facilities. The project must meet certain criteria for roads as outlined in the Calvert County Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance, also known as APFO. The project is under review by both County Public Works, as well as Maryland State Highway Administration for road design, access, hydraulics, all that good stuff. A traffic study was performed by Lenhart Traffic Consulting and approved by State Highway Administration in November of 2021. A traffic signal warrant analysis, also known as a TSWA, was also reviewed by State Highway. Water and sewer. I'm almost finished, I promise.
You're doing great, Chris.
The project site has access to public water and sewer. The design for water and sewer within the site, as well as connection to the existing infrastructure, is currently under review by the Department of Public Works, Water and Sewage Division, and must be approved with a detailed site development plan. A public works agreement is required with that, which will include adherence to all required standards, payment of capital connection fees, and purchase of the required equivalent dwelling units or EDUs prior to permit issuance. And again, this slide shows the north portion of the site, which is proposed to be the convenience store, car wash, and auto filling station. The next couple slides show the architectural review, most of which, for the site, has already been approved. This is one of the retail buildings, Retail Building 1. So I'll just go a little bit over the ARC. The project is located, of course, in Prince Frederick. There's four different applications under which architectural review standards were approved for this project thus far, and they're listed in the staff report. The architectural reviews were conducted by staff due to lack of quorum within the Prince Frederick Architecture Review Committee. The applicant received ARC approvals by staff and the Planning Commission Administrator in 2022, all of which are attached in three, in four separate applications. The retail buildings 1, 2, and 3, plus site amenities, were one application. The proposed Audi was another application. The proposed convenience store was another application. And finally, the master signage plan for the whole site was the fourth application. If you can advance, next slide. This shows retail buildings 2 and 3, and again, it's the same building, it's mirrored. So the floor plan may be different within the building, but the outside is the same. This will contain retail shops. Each building is 8400 square feet, and they're proposed to be one-story. Next slide, please. This is a lot of text. It's really small, but it is the proposed Audi and shows all of the building elevations that were submitted and approved with the architectural review. Next slide, please. This shows the schematic for the proposed medical office building. That has not received architectural approval yet. It hasn't been submitted. But it is, and, and the applicant can speak to that a little more if he needs to. That would go through architectural review. Obviously, it has to be approved and before the, the project could be moved forward. Next slide, please. And when I say project move forward, I mean architectural review is required. And this shows the convenience store at the northern end of the site. Couple of the building elevations for both the convenience store and the car wash. Next slide, please. And this is some of the graphics out of the master signage plan, which is one of the cases that did receive architectural review approval. The next slide actually contains a video. And I know it's about two minutes. That's the end of my presentation. I will add that staff from the Department of Public Works, as well as other staff from... Hopefully, it works. The Department, there we go, Department of Planning and Zoning are present, of course, as well as myself, if you have questions. The applicant and their engineering consultant are present also. And I believe the traffic engineer is here, if you have questions for them.
Christine, the, the, okay, I'm, okay, I'm looking at the video now.
And this just gives a, a, if you were driving in your car, of course, doing the speed limit. Commissioner Jones, going north on 24.
Absolutely.
It, it shows the site on the right side of the picture, and there's a lady on a bike. And, and it, the video is if you were turning right into the site. And I keep wondering why this woman is on a bike and a skirt, but the point of the video, obviously, is not that. But it gives an idea of what the site in a 3D format would look like. And that's the armory ahead in the video, and of course, this is turning further into the site, taking a right, looking both ways. And it gives a good idea of scale, both with the landscaping, the buildings, the parking, and the pedestrian areas. It was a longer video. I believe some of our TS staff, correct me if I'm wrong, got it to about two minutes because we didn't want to sit here all night watching videos.
No, I'm good with that.
So at this time, I will entertain any questions. And again, there's other staff in the room that, you know, it, it may not be appropriate that I answer the question because...
It's okay, Christine.
Exactly.
Well, Planning Commissioners, any questions from anybody?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm curious as to how much wastewater a modern-day car wash generates, considering how pressed we are for wastewater treatment right now. Is that, is that a big gener? I mean, it seems like a lot of water when I wash a car.
They recycle it, John.
It does recycle.
Yeah, it does recycle.
So I don't know much about car washes. I go through them occasionally because of pollen, but I do know that they do recycle the water, and that's some sort of requirement.
Christine, you have a...
And, uh...
I was getting ready to say something right behind you.
It's probably Mr. Ed Gibbs with Gibbs and Holler.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Edward Gibbs, and I'm an attorney. My offices are in Largo. And I'm here this evening representing the applicant and the owner, Armory Square LLC, or the, the developer and applicant. Relative to the car wash, I've been involved in the approval of many of these, these car washes, and, and the water is recycled. It settles down into a tank. There's a screening process where granular, granular items or dirt are separated out. And it is, it is truly amazing, but virtually all of the water is used again, and again, and again. And, and so it's, it's not as if all the water you see for one car wash filters off and goes into the storm system.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, you're the attorney.
I am.
You have a lot of information, and your brains are. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Christine, just for clarification, you referred to the site as Calvert Middle School, but the building was actually built as a high school, 1941. And it served as a high school until sometime in the 60s. But it also had an elementary school that's set on the, on the site. There was a, there was a cornerstone that was removed from the building when it was demolished, and the county retained that. The, the contents of the, of the cornerstone were, were delivered to the Historical Society. I assume they have that, and I believe the county still has that cornerstone. And the Board of County Commissioners at the time agreed to post some kind of a marker in the vicinity of where that cornerstone set, to commemorate the, the folks that went to that high school. Just for a little clarification and a little history.
And, and it's similar to the high school in my hometown of Mount Airy. It was originally built as the high school, but when I went there, it was the elementary school. But thank you for the history on that, Wilson.
Yeah, it was my first experience of ever retaining a cornerstone and, and finding out that it was hollow and there were actually articles with, within, it was a time capsule, essentially. I, I do have a question. The, the applicant had taken exception to some of the recommendations that were made. Have, has that been resolved?
It depends. There were a couple recommendations within the staff report. They are staff recommendations. They're not necessarily conditions that have to be addressed or addressed as stated before the Planning Commission does what the Planning Commission does. There are conditions at the end, and if that's what you're referring to. There are five conditions in the staff recommendation at the end of the staff report. And I know the applicant for conditions one and two was worried about the wording of those. And of course, the, and I can read those if it's appropriate at this time. "All other outstanding agency comments remaining shall be addressed prior to final stamped site plan approval." And then the second one is, "Any subsequent comments received from any county or state agencies shall be addressed prior to final site plan." We're still under review. There are still agencies looking at things. They still have comments. I am one of, and this is any project, but I am one of several different county and state-level staff that look at projects for development review. And I want to acknowledge, you know, personally, that the time that I know a lot of my coworkers have put into this and, and many other projects that we look at. But at this time, there may be comments from State Highway or Public Works, I'm not picking on Public Works, that may evolve because the next iteration of this plan will change their comment. I think the applicant's concern is, there's comments that we don't know exist because they haven't been made yet. How can we possibly address them? So the, the wording... So, the, the wording, I think, is what their concern is. Our intent is not to come up with a bunch of brand-new things at this stage in the review. Our intent is to review it for the ordinance and make the comments appropriately. So, I, I think the wording is up for debate, but the intent is essentially the same. Did that answer your question, Commissioner Freeland?
You know, I, I understand your response, I'd like to hear from the, from the applicant.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Once again, Edward Gibbs as counsel for the, for the applicant this evening. We, we would agree in general, first of all, let me thank Ms. Finnamore for her very thorough presentation and for her staff report. We, by and large, agreed with almost everything that was contained in the staff report. I think with conditions one and two, really, our concern was, what do we mean by the word "addressed"? Does it mean that you will look at it, you will negotiate it, you will try to implement it, or if it creates insurmountable, insurmountable problems, we will work with the agency to implement the intent in any way we can? Or does it mean whatever they say you have to do? And that was our concern. We couldn't agree tonight to blindly accept comments or conditions that have not yet been made, and of which we have no knowledge. And that, that was simply our concern, so we suggested some additional language. We really don't even have to have that language, as long as there's an understanding that "addressed" means let's deal with it, try to implement it if we can, or if it needs to be modified, work with the impacted agency, so that we can modify it, so that, so that it doesn't prevent the development from moving forward. That's what we think "addressed" means, and if there's just a general understanding that that's what it is, then we're fine with condition one and two, as it reads.
Christine, is that an answer?
That was my same, my same understanding.
Okay, so we're, we're at one then, with staff on that, and hopefully with you, so thank you very much. The other items, and, and let me just say this, the, the only reason we raised the other items was because when we read the final, the final sentence on page eight, before you got to the conditions, it says, "Staff recommends approval of SPR 138, 176, Armory Square, subject to the recommendations contained herein and, in the conjunctive, and the following conditions." So, we couldn't read that any way, other than that this approval would be subject, not just to the conditions, but also to the recommendations. And if that were the case, we felt there were, you know, a couple of clarifications, for lack of a better term, that we would like to make to some of the recommendations that are contained within the staff report. And those are in our letter of April twenty-seventh, I believe, that we submitted yesterday. We did have a conversation with Ms. Finnamore and Ms. Sunderland on Monday. We promised we would put our comments in writing, which we did. I can go through those clarifications, if you would like me to do so very quickly, it's.
I would like that, if you don't mind.
Yes, please.
Thank you very much. So, the first clarification beyond the two conditions, which we've now gotten past, is in the staff report on page three, where at the top, the second, the first full paragraph, it says, "The signal," referring to the traffic signal, "the signal should be installed prior to issuance of use and occupancy within the site development." And then it says, "However, site, however, site development may move forward prior to the signal if the following conditions are met." So, we were concerned about the language that says the traffic signal had to be installed prior to use and occupancy. We have no control over when that signal will be approved. That is one hundred percent within the province of the State Highway Administration. Once they approve it, they then have to issue a permit. And the last thing that we wanted was to have to go to a bank, get our loans approved, and say, but wait a second, we, there's a condition proceeding, if you loan us this money and we build this project, and we can't put the signal in, we can't open. So, there was a DPW referral on April eighth of this year, and they removed that condition. They said that the signal did not have to be installed prior to use and occupancy permit. And so, we'd simply would like that reflected in the staff report, because the staff report still makes that a condition. The, the next was also on page three, under the heading "Access From Armory Road." And there, what we were concerned about is the reference to needed upgrades to Armory Road. We understand there will be upgrades to Armory Road, and we have no quarrel with the fact that there will be upgrades. Our concern, once again, was with the last sentence in, in that paragraph on page three, where it says, and I quote, "In order to accommodate setback requirements on site, as well as auxiliary lane for site access, county staff are recommending that Armory Road design and construction occur prior to or in conjunction with Armory Square site development." Once again, we don't have any control over when that design is going to be completed and how it will be implemented. So, we had proffered some additional language, which we have in our letter of April twenty-seventh, and wherein we state that "We agree Armory Road as it exists is in need of upgrades. Prior to final stamped site plan approval, the applicant shall enter into a development agreement or memorandum of understanding with the county commissioners in order to establish a scope for improvements to Armory Road and a timing mechanism for design and construction of those improvements." So, it's just a clarification, that we are at one with staff and with everyone in county government about the upgrades to Armory Road, but, once again, we wouldn't want to be in a position where we couldn't complete the construction without the, the improvements to Armory Road being completed. We, we don't control the timing on that, and, and so, I think that the memorandum of understanding or development agreement with county commissioners secures everyone in terms of knowing that this is going to be taken care of, but it might be a timing schedule, which takes us slightly beyond the development of the site.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask Mr. Mattingly a question about what has just been proffered. Is that, is that an acceptable substitution in this case, or do you need some time to study that more?
I would say no, but.
Okay, all right, that's all I need to know, okay.
I disagree.
All right, very well, thank you. Continue, sir, I'm sorry.
The, yes, the next was the parking issue, and it, once again, we just wanted to point out that we're proposing four hundred and eight parking spaces, three eighty-five are required. We're allowed by the Calvert County Zoning Ordinance to go up to a hundred and twenty-five percent of what the required number is, which would be four eighty-two. So, we, we just have a, a very, very modest increase in the parking spaces. And the one thing that we had been asking for as part of the site plan was to allow the building and parking setback from Armory Road to be twenty-five feet in lieu of the normal thirty-five feet. The Planning Commission is allowed to approve that reduction, and in point of fact, it has been reduced for the Taco Bell and for the Fox Run Professional Center. Their, their parking is twenty-five feet, which is what we're proposing for this project, twenty-five feet from the current alignment of Armory Road. And then finally, on page five of the staff report, under the heading "Adequate Public Facilities", there is a statement that the "Traffic Impact Analysis Prepared by Lenhart Traffic Consulting" is currently under review by DPW and State Highway, and in point of fact, it has been reviewed and approved by both of those agencies already. So, it's no longer under review, so that's just a clarification as well. That's really, that's really all we had on the report. Once again, we thank Ms. Ms. Finnamore and all the other agencies for their thorough review.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, any other questions? None being heard, we will take public comment. We will start first with persons here, Mr. Burry, come on up. I picked you first, because I think you had a hot topic on your mind.
David Burry, Chesapeake Beach, speaking for myself. I just wanted to flag one issue that I found in the traffic impact assessment. Right now, one of the intersections that was studied by Lenhart under current conditions has a failing intersection with a grade of F, that's Maryland two-four at F four oh two. The proposed remediations in the traffic impact study for either scenario one or scenario two, bring that intersection level of service up to an E. That's still failing under the Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance. So, those remediations would be inadequate. The other curious thing about those particular scenarios is that they both presume that Route two-four expansion phase two has already been funded and, and accomplished. And in fact, there is no funding in place for Route two-four expansion two. So, that, that particular intersection is a problem under APFO with the current proposal for Armory Square. I can give you page references for the TIA, if you'd like to hear them, thanks.
Thank you very much, David.
David, come back, give us those page references, please, thanks.
Yeah, so it's TIA, page forty-nine is the present level of service for PM rush hour. It's Maryland two-four at four oh two. And then for the scenario one remediation, that's on page sixty-nine. And scenario two remediation is on page eighty-five. So, I'm unsure why State Highway Administration didn't flag that. It's, it's a long report, maybe they missed it. But it's worth looking to see if the issue that I'm raising is, is in fact a legitimate one, thank you.
David, email that to us, please, and.
Yeah, I'll, I'll highlight, highlight the sections and email it to both you and Public Works.
Thank you. Can you follow up on that with us, please?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Go ahead, please, Jenny.
Jenny Plummer Welker, Long Range Planner, just a point of clarification, question from Mr. Burry, if I may. Phase two has been completed, so I guess you might be, phase three?
I may have read that in long part.
Okay.
In either case, for scenario, for scenarios one and two, the proposed remediations still result in an intersection overall level of service of E.
I think this question still stands, but I just want to clarify, the phase two of the Prince Frederick two-four widening in front, up to Fox Run Boulevard is complete.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Cormier, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm still learning all this stuff, I don't understand. Joe Cormier from Owings, Maryland. First, I've looked at this kind of plan, and I, you, you had me at car wash, I didn't understand where that came from. There's one right across the street, we talked about the water being recycled, but all the things that are pulled out of the water, the fuel, the oil, all the sediments, is that discharged into the sewer system, or is that transported down to the PL landfill? And I'm not sure where the traffic light is, is that on two-four, or is that on Dears Beach Road? Because if it's, I can't imagine coming out of that parking lot onto Dears Beach Road and turning left when there's a light there and a circle right next to it. So, I would hope you'd make that a right turn only right there. And a hundred and eighty days out of the year, you've got Calvert Middle School on one side, and Calvert High School, Calvert Country School, Calvert Elementary School, all discharging buses twice a day, a hundred and eighty days out of the year. And I don't know how the traffic is going to impact that in this plan, it just doesn't, we had a bus strike earlier this year, and I don't know if anybody tried to get into Calvert Middle or Calvert High School while the buses were on strike, and it was a hot nightmare. So, I, I am concerned about turning onto Dears Beach Road out of this parking lot, doesn't seem to make a lot of sense, and Armory Road needs a lot of work, if it's going to handle all this extra traffic. So, that's, that's where my concerns are tonight, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
If I may clarify, the entrance that's proposed, and the slide is no longer on the screen, but it is in your packet, the entrance that's proposed off of Maryland four oh two is directional or right in, right out?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other public comment? Sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have our traffic consultant, Mr. Lenhart, respond to the comments made relative to the level of service, because we think that's an error.
Please.
Good evening, Mike Lenhart, for the record. I did take a look at page forty-nine. The gentleman was referencing, there's a lot of numbers and letters on that page, he was referencing the wrong number. It's a level of service E was the existing condition when the traffic study was done. The phase two improvements that we referenced for the Route two-four upgrade was what has been since completed. That's the three lanes through Dears Beach Road, up through, up to Fox Run Boulevard. And so, with that completed, the intersection is a level of service D with or without the development of this project, so it does pass the level of service requirements.
Thank you. You know, typically, David, I, I'm, I'm going to let you ask one question, okay?
Yeah, so, maybe I'm incorrectly interpreting the data on page sixty-nine and page eighty-five, that in your scenarios one and two, still characterize those intersections with a level of service E. If I'm incorrectly interpreting them, I stand corrected.
Yes. I don't mean it sound this way, but yes, you're incorrectly interpreting it. There's HCM two thousand measures, if you look at that, it's a level of service D in total, background and total traffic condition, so it is passing. The study has been reviewed by State Highway Administration and Department of Public Works, they concur, and I feel very confident with the results.
Thank you, sir.
Then, Mr. Chairman, just ever so briefly, I'd like to have Mr. Alexin come up and address the issue of the timing for the construction completion of the improvements to Armory Road. Your counsel rather summarily just said no to our proposal without any reason that was articulated anyhow, and I'd just like to have Mr. Alexin explain why we were making that proposal. It, once again, relates to just the difficulty in being able to say you can accomplish that prior to completion of the development of the project, so if he could address that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Anthony Alexin, I'm a professional civil engineer. Barrett and Associates have been doing the design on the project. So, when the traffic study was proposed for this project, it actually did not require any upgrades to Armory Road. The county's transportation plan has improvements to that and widening and realignment of it to comply with their current standards. So, our client kind of proffered that up as part of this development to participate in that, realizing that the proposed development included a lot of the frontage along that roadway, and they would need to be involved with that. The challenge with it is, if, the realignment requires actually acquisition of property from a number of different property owners, from the Taco Bell all the way out to the Roundabout. The timing that it would take to acquire those properties, do the realignment work, the permitting, not only with the county, but with the state as well, at the Roundabout, as well as a slew of utility relocations and coordination that needs to be done, is really what the challenge is for timing. It's not as simple as just saying, hey, we're going to, you know, widen the road a little bit, throw a sidewalk, a curb and gutter on it. It's involvement of property acquisition, a lot of technical issues that require that involvement from a number of property owners as well. So, I think that's really what's driving the timeline for this. This is not something that we can accommodate now, but it's something that has been offered up to participate in and help facilitate what the county is seeing for Armory Road through that segment.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? I will defer, Chris, to you, do we have anybody on Zoom?
No, sir.
So, we received a lot of comment and information about this today, so I will defer to the Planning Commission for a motion.
Mr. Chair, it is my opinion that we, we don't have everything dotted and crossed. I would suggest and move that we get this back to staff to work it out with the developer, owner, to hash out this language, so that we can vote on something and bring it back to us next month. So, I would actually, just my, my, my motion is to table this until next month.
Can, can I ask a question?
Sure you can.
Inside your motion, is there time constraints that were, is there any time?
There's always time constraints.
I'm, I'm not comfortable with the language being proffered not being acceptable by our counsel, and I don't want to get into a back and forth with them, so let's, my motion is to table this, and it's just a simple vote, no discussion, bring it back. Bring it back next month clean, please.
Motion void.
Okay, if I'm on, I just, I want to make sure I'm on the same page. The
You have five.
The language
You have five conditions.
Regarding the development agreement or the five conditions, mainly conditions one and two?
The five conditions.
Okay.
Page eight.
You good?
I do have a question. What are the implications of tabling it for thirty days?
I'm probably not the best staff person in the room to answer that question. I may defer first to Mary Beth Cook, our director.
Good, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, I think more appropriately it's us. I'd like to ask Mr. Bailey if he could come up. I mean, we're, we have a contract with the county relative to the development of this property and we have certain obligations. With the utmost of respect, Commissioner, I felt that we were at one after my comments on conditions one and two. As long, I thought Ms. Finnemore.
I've not, I've not gotten that back from anybody yet. So if someone was to clear that up, Christine, Mr. Mattingly, do you want to weigh in on this at all?
I wrote them and that's the standard wording that's been in staff reports for over two and a half years. I'm comfortable with the wording.
Mr. Gibbs, you're comfortable with the wording as it stands now?
I'm comfortable with the wording with the understanding that it's not, you have to do whatever any agency says, but you will address it by working with them before you come back with your final site plan package. And I thought Ms. Finnemore had said that was her understanding as well. And if it is, we're, we are at one.
Are you?
Correct.
Thank you, sir. All right. Does your motion hold?
Yes, my motion, my motion still holds, so then we can vote it, vote it up and down.
Motion by Commissioner Kern. Do I have a second? It fails. No second. Motion fails. All right, so motions on the floor.
Mr. Chairman, regarding SPR 138176, Armory Square, I make a motion that we approve with the conditions listed as above as recommended by staff.
Commissioner, by Mr. Toohey?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Kern. All in favor?
Aye.
Hold on. Question?
Sorry.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. So that's all, the five conditions that are listed?
Yeah.
Is with, is in your motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, motion carries.
Point of clarification. Was the intent that the recommendations that were included in the staff report as well as the conditions or just the five conditions?
How do you want to do it? That's tough. The Peter Gallery back there has their opinions. Christine, do you have an opinion?
I always have an opinion.
I know, that's why I turned to you.
So, and it's a great question. Thank you for asking. There are five conditions in the staff report. There are recommendations within the staff report that are yours to either recommend, not recommend, maybe ask questions, maybe change. That is, they were included for information. They're recommendations from staff. You could embrace them or?
So if I was going to, if I was going to change that motion, I would have to move those over into a?
They could be treated as, you know, maybe the wording I look to Mr. Mattingly for if, if, if what I included in the staff report isn't covering everything. Recommendations, one was to staff recommends that certain number of parking spaces include electric charging stations. That helps with parking counts. It's also just a recommendation. It's not required. That's one example.
And just as a point of clarification, your motion didn't encompass the recommendations. It was just for the conditions only.
Right, so I will leave my motion stand as it was with the five, the five conditions.
It was seconded and then?
Is that all right, Colonel?
That's good.
Good. Figure out.
Thank you. Carolyn, who was yours?
Next item before the board is Item Seven, Major Subdivision Applications for Preliminary Review and Action. We have one item, Item seven A, which is SD 142751, Armory Square subdivision plan for lots one and two. Chris Finnemore will also be presenting this case.
Good evening. My name's Chris Finnemore. And there are slides associated with this as well. I'm a principal planner with the Department of Planning and Zoning. And I'm here again tonight to present the subdivision plan for Armory Square, SD 142751. And I'll only wait so long for those slides. There we go. Thank you. So the preliminary subdivision plan, also known as the PSP, proposes to abandon the property lines between parcel four seventy-seven. And if you can go to the next slide, please. And it is a little off-center, but we can work with that. Proposes to abandon the property lines between parcel four seventy-seven and seven one five and create lots one and two, both commercial, as well as dedicate zero point one nine eight acres of Armory Road right of way, which is a county road right of way. What you see on the slide before you again is similar to the map that, that you looked at before in the site plan presentation. It shows the site in relation to the Dares Beach Road, Maryland 402 and Maryland 24 intersection in the middle of Prince Frederick. Next slide, please. And again, this is the twenty twenty-two aerial photography shows the site. The town center limits are shown in an orangey-yellow and also labeled the Maryland Route 24 and Maryland 402, also known as Dares Beach Road are labeled for context. Next slide, please. Again, the slide is a little off-center, but you get the idea that this is the slide that shows the overall Prince Frederick Town Center zoning districts. The new town subarea is in blue, which is where the site is located. Next slide. Keep going because this is the site plan. It is, keep going, keep going. Slide seventeen is what we're looking for. One more. Okay, one more. There we go. And again, it's a little off-center, but you guys get the idea. It shows the site. The conceptual subdivision plan was submitted in December of twenty twenty. The preliminary subdivision plan was submitted in December of twenty twenty-one and reviewed by the Subdivision Evaluation Group, also known as the SEG. Preliminary subdivision plan number two was submitted in March of this year and comments were issued early April and what the staff report is based on. Parcels four seventy-seven and seven one five, as, as I stated before, equal twelve point five eight acres and they're proposing to subdivide it into lots one and two. There's a lot of information on these plans. We don't want to leave anything out. The property lines are hard to see. But if you see the access that's going from Armory Road on this map, straight down the, the drawing to Maryland 24, thank you cursor, the property line proposed between lots one and two is just to the left of that. And so that proposed easement would be wholly on lot one. The setbacks, again, from Maryland 24 and 402 are twenty-five feet from the nearest travelway or ten foot minimum from the property line. The setbacks from Armory Road are thirty-five feet. They can be reduced to twenty-five from the edge of curb with Planning Commission approval. The staff recommends that the setbacks along Armory Road for buildings and parking be no less than twenty-five feet from the edge of curve of the ultimate alignment of Armory Road improvement plans. The side setbacks are twenty feet. If the property is adjacent to a parcel that has an existing non-residential use, in the case of this site, it would be the northernmost property line as it abuts the, the property to the north. If you all know where Taco Bell is, that's a Taco Bell. It, the setback may be reduced to zero feet if emergency access and maintenance are properly addressed. And as part of the SEG review, of course, those, those comments were raised and public safety has no issue and maintenance does not appear to be an issue. So that setback at this time is able to be reduced. Site access, pedestrian and vehicle flow. Vehicular access is, as we previously discussed with the site plan, is proposed from Maryland 24, Maryland 402 and from Armory Road. Again, from Maryland 24, there are two access points proposed. From Armory Road, there are three access points. And then the access point onto Dares Beach Road. Maryland 402 is, there's one and it's proposed as a right in, right out or a directional entrance. Adequate public facilities. The project must meet certain criteria for roads as outlined in the Calvert County Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance. The project is under review by both DPW and Maryland State Highway Administration. As we've recently clarified, the traffic study has been approved by State Highway and that was November of twenty twenty-one. And some of this information is the same, but of course I didn't want to leave anything out. Cultural resources, I think Commissioner Freeland covered the backstory on the property. Thank you. The property was previously housed, the Calvert Middle School, but it was Calvert High School before that, constructed in nineteen forty-one and demolished between twenty eleven and twenty thirteen. And it's inventoried in the Maryland Inventory of Historic Properties. Environmental, again, was covered with the site plan, but I'll briefly go over again. There was a wetland report done. There was a jurisdictional determination by the Army Corps of Engineers that was completed and confirmed the delineation. And the Maryland Department of the Environment, also known as MDE, permit was issued for the, the project needs. The project does have to meet forest conservation requirements. That's a state requirement through the Maryland Forest Conservation Act. They're proposing some onsite retention and some offsite in the form of forested TDRs. And a final forest conservation plan would have to be approved before final plat recordation and final site plan approval. So for the subdivision plan, the staff recommendations include six conditions as listed on Page four of the staff report. At this time, I'll entertain any questions of myself. There's other planning and zoning staff in the room as, as well as hopefully DPW staff are still here. And again, the applicant, Mr. Gibbs, and their engineer and traffic engineer are present for any questions.
Planning Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff or the applicant? None being heard? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak that's here now? Joe, please. Name again.
Hi, Joe Cormier, Owings, Maryland. I had a question about, you just said TDRs. I thought TDRs were a residential thing. Do TDRs apply to businesses as well for building out spaces? And then we talked, you talked briefly about electric charging stations. I didn't see that in the plan. And is there a bus station or a rapid transit station for people to get from one side of Ford to the other or from one side of the county to get to this new development? Is there a specific place that buses are going to stop and bring people who don't have cars? And yeah, that was my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I can answer the question about the, the TDR inclusion in this. What happens is, yes, there are TDRs associated with residential density. There's also what's called forested TDRs. Forest conservation TDRs are one form of mitigation in order to meet those requirements. Essentially, what it does is it goes through the Ag Preservation Program. A TDR is converted to a forested TDR because a farmer somewhere has an acre of forest and they record it as forest retention area, long-term retention. And it's used as a mitigation piece for either subdivision or development projects. And it permanently retains, one forested TDR equals one acre of forest permanently retained. For the other questions as far as bus stops in Prince Frederick, that may be appropriate for either the applicant or our long-range planner to answer?
No, typically we use this for public comment and not Q and A, but I'm going to give an exception if somebody can answer the man's question.
We're not aware of a bus stop that's proposed within this project. There is a bus stop at the Fox Run Professional Center. There's a dialysis facility within that, within Fox Run and that necessitates, in their view, the need for a bus stop there. My client has indicated you could certainly work with the Fox Run folks and, and the transit facility to accommodate something, whether it's a new bus stop that would be part of this project or use of that one. I hope that answers the question.
I think you had some charging station questions too, but?
Yeah, that's on the detail, that's on the site plan.
Okay.
So, and the answer is yes.
Thank you, sir.
We had no objection to any of that.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments from the public here? Any callers? Okay, staff is recommending approval of SD 142751, Armory Square preliminary subdivision plan with six conditions as lists in the staff report. Is there any discussion from the Planning Commission? Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Kern, seconded by Commissioner Toohey. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Next item before the board.
Very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Christine, excellent job. Thank you.
Yeah, really.
All right, folks, take it outside. We've got to go home.
The next item before the board is Item Eight, which are, which is long-range planning. We have two items. Item eight A is the Prince Frederick Master Plan Update. Jenny Plummer-Welker will be presenting.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
This will be very short.
Thank you.
Are you sure?
Two minutes.
Okay.
So master plan, I, I'd like to recognize that I am joined virtually by the other long-range planning staff, Tamara Blake Wallace, Jessica Katana and Kat Lockwood are on Zoom with us this evening. For Prince Frederick, staff is meticulously going through your directives to make edits to the Prince Frederick Master Plan draft and making those and track changes so that you and the public can see what we have done. We'll bring that back to you when it's ready for your review and then for your decision to whether to move forward or have staff make further revisions. That concludes Prince Frederick. Any questions?
Any questions, Commissioners?
Not at this time. No questions. Thank you.
No actions required. Our next item is Eight B, Dunkirk Master Plan Update. Jenny?
For Dunkirk, we talked with you last month at the March sixteenth and you directed staff to further explore the transportation concerns and develop possible solutions. We're currently have worked up a scope of work and we'll be sending that out to our five consultants that are on, on call to have quotes pulled in. Would like to note just very briefly that since being posted on Facebook, the video that Darrell Baxter starred? that Darrell Baxter stars in for the Dunkirk Recreational Amenities has been viewed over 6,600 times.
Wow.
And that's since it was posted on January 26th. The septic school video, which explains how septic systems work, it's an interview that Darrell Baxter did with one of the University of Maryland specialists, Dr. Lazor, has been viewed over 595 times. Obviously, recreation's more popular than septic systems. That concludes my report. What I'd like to note, if there are no, well, if they, I'll be glad to answer any questions, but moving forward, unless we have something for you to either discuss or to take action on, we will not be bringing updates to you monthly, but as needed for discussion or action.
Any questions or comments, Commissioners? Thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Next item before the board is item 10, which is the public comment period. At this time, we will be opening the floor and the meeting for public comment. According to the Calvert County Ordinance, number 51-21, the Planning Commission Chair will first request comments from those attending in person and then those attending virtually. Speakers, whether in person or participating by phone or virtually, will be limited to two minutes as individuals and five minutes if representing an organization or group. Are there any, any speakers for in-person?
Oh, God, please.
Joseph Cormier from Owings, Maryland. I just want to say thank you for having this meeting, the joint meeting tonight. It's my first Planning Commission meeting, and I've learned a lot tonight, and I look forward to coming back. I don't know the histories of anybody who's on this board, but I don't know if there's a lens of special education or adults with developmental disabilities, and I hope that I learn more about that, and I, I want to bring that lens to this commission and to the county. So thank you so much, and have a great evening.
Thanks for your comments. Thanks, Joe.
My apologies to the board. I skipped over item nine, which is subdivision and site plan projects for consideration. Is there any questions? With that, then, we will move on. Is, from the moderator, is there anyone that wishes to speak from virtually?
No hand showing.
Okay, then we'll move on to item 11, which is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Couldn't get it out quick enough. I'm going to give Commissioner Tui the first and Commissioner Kern the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Have a good night, and thank you all for your patience. Thank you. Staff, everybody else, really good. Good day.